Good morning. The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County is now in regular session on August 5th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. and the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County Administrators Building 200 South Texas Avenue Suite 106 Bryant, Texas. Commissioner Watson will lead us into prayer and invocation.
Gracious God, we come before you with humble hearts, recognizing that our purpose here is to serve others. Help us to approach this meeting with a spirit of humility and a desire to serve the greater good. May we focus on what is best for all, guide us in our service, and bless us in our efforts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, good morning. It's the court's intention this morning to start with Agenda Item 3, the approval of Resolution 25-007 naming the J.J.A.E.P. Training Room at the Juvenile Service, the Joel M. Hind Juvenile Justice Training Room, in honor of his contributions to our juvenile justice system.
Move for approval.
Second motion and a second. Do we have a presentation? Linda, would you please? You want me to read it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I don't think I can read.
Glad I'm getting my steps in today. Resolution naming the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program Training Room at Brazos County Juvenile Services at 1904 State Highway 21 West, the Joel M. Hind Juvenile Justice Training Room. Whereas Joel M. Hind dedicated 32 years to the Brazos County Juvenile Services Department in detention, intake, placement, and as a deputy director of our community services and served the youth and families of Brazos County. And whereas Deputy Director Hind's humor, warm smile, generosity, and encouragement touched the lives both in the department and throughout the community. And whereas Deputy Director Hind was an inspiration to us all, leaving behind a legacy of compassion, leadership, and unwavering support for others. And whereas Deputy Director Hind forged many relationships with this community and loved working with those community partners such as the Reality Education for Drivers Program, the Art for Life Program, the Federal Prison Let's Talk Program, and many volunteers, mentors, and interns. And whereas Deputy Director Hind's coworkers characterized him as exuberant, devoted, entertaining, altruistic, constant compassion, inspirational, godly, noble, genuine, hilarious, and steadfast. And whereas Deputy Director Hind will never be able to be replaced, we will honor him and continue to encourage the juveniles and families as he did. And whereas Deputy Director Hind made our lives so much better because he was part of them. And whereas the Commissioners' Court and the Brazos County Juvenile Services Department wish to express appreciation for Deputy Director Hind's dedication, now therefore, the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County do hereby declare the name of the Training Room and the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program at Brazos County Juvenile Services at 1904 Highway 21 West to be the Joel M. Hind Juvenile Justice Training Room, resolved this 5th day of August 2025 by the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County.
And Judge and Commissioners, I would just like to say how much I thank you for this on behalf of the Juvenile Justice Department here and Joel's family and friends that he has here today. And we just appreciate this so much, and it means so much to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a center.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Come on down. It's okay. It's okay to touch shoulders. Maybe it's a little thing.
Thank you all. It is also the court's intention to recognize Karen McQueen at this time.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. If I can get started, I'm going to try to do this without crying. I'm here to talk about an extraordinary lady that we lost last week, that Ruth McLeod, employee number two. She served the county for 54 years. Yes. She went through six judges and 25 commissioners, and we counted them. Ruth was a pillar in this county. I have an article here from The Eagle dated 1982 that talks about three administrative assistants that worked for the county. "Ruth McLeod Keeps Her Cool" is the title of her article, and that says a lot about Ruth. She was a woman known throughout the courthouse for seldom losing her cool. And those of us that worked with Ruth and knew Ruth, she was not only a friend, but she was a mentor. You could talk to Ruth no matter how busy she was. She put down what she was doing. She gave you her undivided attention and made you feel like what you were saying was important to her, and she listened. Ruth liked to work. She was almost a workaholic. She loved election time, believe it or not. She did elections for the county clerk's office where she started and continued up till when she retired, proofing ballots. And I think she did it because she liked to get the printout to see who was winning and who was losing before anybody else. Because that was her job. She did HR. She liked redistricting. She did the redistricting back before the mapping technology with precinct maps in colored pencils. We'd find her on the floor coloring. She did not want recognition or awards. She liked being behind the scenes. She liked working. She didn't want to be called to the front. The only time she ever got upset was when they named the Ruth McLeod Building after her. She was not happy with Commissioner Catalina for putting that out there.
Choking would be a better word.
Choking would be a better word, because Ruth was a behind-the-scenes worker. In 2019, she left the Commissioners' Court and came back to work for the county clerk's office before she retired in 2020. So I asked Ruth what it felt like to come full circle, and she said, "I ended where I started, and it's good to be back." So there are a lot of people in this audience that could talk about Ruth. And they're very fortunate to have known Ruth. So she was a treasure to the county and everybody. And I thank y'all for letting me talk about this morning.
Thank you, Karen. Good job.
Thank you, Karen.
She'd be proud of you and mad at you for calling her out.
Judge, I have that we still need a vote on number three.
Yes. So on Agenda Item Number 3, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, and motion carries. All right. Thank you for your patience. We are moving back to order of the agenda today in Brazos County Commissioners' Court, Number 2, Call for Citizens' Input and Concerns. First up, Kathy Veenes. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Good morning. Kathy Veenes, Precinct 4. That was quite the tribute to Ms. McLeod. I never had the honor of meeting her, but she sounds like my kind of lady. And elections is actually one of the topics that I wanted to address today. I know for a number of 20, 30 years now, 20, that we've had an election administrator running the elections, but I would, since it's up to the court how the elections are run, I would, I'm a proponent of having the county clerk run the elections for the purpose, the end result of transparency and accountability. The other, another topic that I wanted to bring up today was in regard to a friend of mine protesting her taxes, and the county is in charge of the tax rates and so forth. And in her effort to protest her taxes, she did not have the ability, or there's not an ability on the CAD website, for citizens to access the same sales information as the CAD office is. And I feel like that the public should have the same access to data that is being used to raise their taxes on their appraisals. So if they would have the access to all the sales figures for their local residents to make that fair comparison, I think that would be a positive thing for the citizens. And the last thing I wanted to bring up was the website for the county. Still does not have the capability of searching for who your commissioner is. And I think it's really important. I've talked to so many people, especially with the No East Loop effort. So many people don't know who their commissioner is, and there's no ability to just easily look on the website, "Who represents me?" We can find our other representatives, but not the Commissioners' Court. They're not easily accessible. You have to look on a map. You have to navigate all the colors and so forth. If we could just have that added to the website, I would be very grateful. I think everybody would. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, the court calls Christine Schimmick. Please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Christine Schimmick. I live in Precinct 2. That's all I need, right? So today I'm going to talk about transportation improvements. And we have two entities here, so I just need, I'm going to give a little bit of background on them. There's the MPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Organization in Bryan College Station. The MPO develops plans, coordinates the transportation planning process, and urban areas over 50,000 population are required to have an MPO in order to spend federal money on transportation improvements. The MPO for BCS was initiated May 19, 1970. There is also an RMA, Regional Mobility Authority in Brazos County. The RMAs are focused on regional transportation development and implementation with oversight from the Texas Transportation Commission, which is TTC. So just a quick history. 2018, a petition was submitted by Brazos County to the TTC. 2019, the TTC issued a minute order allowing the county to create the RMA. 2019, later that year, Brazos County Commissioners accepted the minute order, and the RMA was created. January 2020, first meeting of the RMA. September 2021, Texas House Bill 1698, introduced by Representatives Rainey and Cassell, was approved. The RMA was enacted into law and became contingent upon voter approval. November 2022 was the Tripone B referendum, and funding for the RMA failed. The RMA is meeting for a regular board meeting on Friday. So I have from their published Agenda, Item Number 4, "To Review and Adopt Fiscal and Personnel Management Agreement Between the RMA and Brazos County." The fiscal and personnel management agreement was drafted by Brazos County General Counsel. The purpose of the agreement is to allow Brazos County to serve as the fiscal and personnel agent for the organization. And this agreement specifies the roles and responsibilities of both parties and allows the RMA to be considered a county subdivision for the purposes of benefits and other finance-related cost savings. And then they have a note that action is required. So my question is, exactly what was drafted by Brazos County General Counsel? Does this County Commissioners' Court intend to provide creative financing or personnel support to the BCRMA despite voters' clear rejection of funding? Will taxpayers of Brazos County be paying for putting the Underground University Drive beneath Buzel to College Avenue or building the two-level stadium-like roundabout at University and Buzel? And this project was $2 billion in 2018, so what is the cost now? And the images that I'm looking at come from the BCRMA.org website. And on Page 6, there is an image of University Drive that is put underground beneath the road around North Gate. And then on Page 7, there is what looks like a stadium of a surface roundabout with Buzel and University intersecting beneath the ground. So again, my question is, are those things that are still going to be paid for? How much do they cost? And is the RMA still being funded? Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. The court calls Cindy Wiley. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Good morning. Cindy Wiley, Precinct 1. You may be aware of what's happening in the 28th Congressional District in South Texas. I've summarized an article from Gateway Pundit and an individual involved. Prior to and during the November 2024 election, Congressman Henrik Huayuar, Democrat, was serving his 11th term in U.S. House of Representatives and was under a DOJ indictment on multiple charges for allegedly taking over $600,000 from foreign entities between 2014 and 2021. He remained on the ballot and won his seat in the November 2024 race, and his opponent, Jay Furman, contested the results. Trump, a Republican, won this district by seven points. Huayuar, Democrat, won this same district by five points. Voting took Voting took place using a Texas Secretary of State-approved electronic voting system. Same district, same election, same place, same machines. Really? Opposite parties. Furman submitted more than 80 affidavits and hundreds of legal declarations from voters who were claiming that Furman's name was not on their ballot, so they were denied the ability to choose. The focus is on Webb County. The Court of Appeals ordered an immediate forensic review of the ballots for Furman. Information from a participant in the process revealed the review process was interrupted. They were unable to complete copying the ballots. If you cannot complete the task, you are denied the final results, i.e., the evidence to determine a conclusion. And if his name was missing, the people would have been denied the right to choose their representative. Therefore, a selection was made during the election, the electronic voting systems approved by the Secretary of State of Texas, as the tool of choice to select the winner who will carry out someone else's agenda. I really do not think this can be seen any other way. Nine months into this mess, no evidence seen. Does not indicate the absence of evidence, especially with using these, using machines to record our precious votes. The treasure trove of evidence regarding election machine manipulations and dirty voter rolls being used to pick winners and losers is overwhelming. Texas election departments can be run by either an election administrator or a county clerk. The county clerk is voted in by the people. An election administrator is appointed by an election commission, which consists of your judge, your county judge, county clerk, tax assessor, and each party chair. Together, those five will make that choice for the entire county. The County Commissioners' Court at any time can choose the process of how their county will conduct elections. If a County Commissioners' Court chooses to participate in having an appointed election administrator, then they share in the success or failure of that person's tasks. If the County Commissioners' Court chooses to participate in having a county clerk, then the success or failure of that person is carried on the shoulders of the people. Texas countywide polling program is flawed. It can allow one's ballot to be traced back to a voter. The reaction to this revelation by our Secretary of State has compounded this issue by now making the results un-auditable by citizens. Vote total manipulations have been identified regarding the electronic voting systems. The lack of accurate voter roll maintenance has been identified. We need to honestly look at the foregoing issues and deal with the problems per Trump's Executive Order 14248. Thank you.
Cindy.
I'm sorry. Did you have a little bit more time that you wanted to speak? Because I-
I have one more sentence.
She needs to be allowed to finish. I had a delay in starting.
Absolutely. Please continue.
Thank you. Just as you did regarding the East Loop, eliminate countywide polling program, dump the machines, hand-mark our ballots, tabulate our ballots using tabulators, and verify by hand-counting of the people. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Cindy, thank you, and thank you for a copy of the written testimony as well. The court now calls Kyle Greenwood. Please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Kyle Greenwood, Precinct Two. I'd like to start off by thanking the court for the decisive action they took last week in regard to the Inner East Loop. We had a really big time at Joe's, blowing off some steam, poking fun at each other. And, but now it's time to get back to work. As a follow-up to last week's vote, I had a meeting with Transportation Commissioner Alvin Newe and discussed with him the Inner East Loop. And he confirmed to me what Representative Cassell told me back in November, which was that TechDOT has no interest in a new road such as the Inner East Loop. For a variety of reasons, primarily demands for funding. So then he also confirmed to me what we heard Commissioner Alvis say to Waller County a few months ago. And despite what we may have heard from consultants or maybe in some online fear-mongering, TechDOT is not going to come in and force a road through a community where there's no support for it. Finally, he urged me to meet with the MPO, if that was our desire, to get the road removed. And so we did that. We met with Dan Rudge yesterday and explained to me and to Beverly what the process would be to have a road removed. And it all begins by submitting a formal written request to review the full thoroughfare concept. He also, he said that that would take approximately eight to 12 months. And fortunately, for the reason, for the way that he has structured it previously, there would be no impact to his budget. Additionally, he said that there were some inconsistencies in the thoroughfare plans between what he has and what the cities have. And so echoing what the judge said in his radio interview last week. And so it seems like this may be an opportune time to move forward with that review of the thoroughfare concept. So when that written request is submitted, I would ask that it would be made public either through a press release or maybe a social media post. And I think that would go a long way to addressing some of the lingering concerns amongst the community about what may have happened and what may happen in the future, as well as help regaining the trust of the public. Finally, one other question was posed this past week about how the cities of Curtain and Wixon Valley might have some representation in this process. I don't know how that would happen or how to go about that, but I think it's a question worth considering. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. The court now calls Chris Barnes. Mr. Barnes, please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Chris Barnes, Precinct Two. I'm sorry that I've been out of town for the last couple of Commissioners' Court meetings. I've been in Alaska fishing. Retirement is a wonderful thing. I highly recommend it. So did I miss anything while I was gone?
No.
Okay. In all seriousness, I want to start by thanking each and every one of you for the decision for canceling the East Loop project last week. I know it wasn't an easy decision, but it was the right thing to do. Right thing to do's aren't always easy, but I commend you for doing the right thing. I began coming to these meetings because of the East Loop about nine months ago. And I've learned a few things since I've been coming, and I wanted to share them with the court. The first one was that citizenship requires participation. We were told this from the very outset, and I've learned that it's very true. It's not just true for us, the voters. It's also true for elected officials. And to that end, I want to thank Commissioner Nettles, Commissioner Brown, and Commissioner Watson, because I know that each of y'all have held town hall meetings. Good opportunity for informal feedback back and forth. Judge Cassell, you're brand-new, so I'll give you a pass. Commissioner Condala, I know that last week you mentioned that you were not going to run for reelection, and I respect that decision. It's a personal decision. But you still have, what, 17 months left on this bench? That's a lot of time. I would encourage you to meet with folks in your precinct, which includes me. And I think that since the big divisiveness has kind of passed us, I think we'll find that town hall might actually be a little bit more cordial, maybe even fun. I don't know if I can use that word. Second thing is that for those of us who do not live inside the cities of Bryan and College Station, this court is our only form of elected representation. I know that your precincts include people inside the city limits, but those people already have a voice on what happens to them. They get to vote in city elections, city mayors, things like that. For those of us, especially who live out in the county, especially who live in the ETJs, it's kind of a situation of taxation without representation. The cities can do things that affect us, even if we're not in ETJ. It affects people farther out. So you are our only voice. As a result, it's my belief that you folks should place a heavier weight on folks that live out in the county as opposed to city matters. Cities already have lots of input. You're the only people we have to come to for issues that affect folks of us out in the county. Forty-five seconds. Last thing, when I first spoke a long time ago, I mentioned something about impact fees. And I endorsed the suggestion that we should use impact fees more. I researched a little bit more, and after looking at it, I'm even more convinced that it's the right thing to do. Basically, new growth requires new infrastructure. The question comes down to who pays for that infrastructure. People who have already, who have lived here a long time, they already paid for the infrastructure that's in place, and we pay for the upkeep for that infrastructure. So it seems to me that the fairest method of payment for new building and new construction - I'll hit that next week.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Court now calls Marie Wood. Please state your name and the precinct you live in.
I think I'm in Precinct One. I couldn't find it on the website. I live at 999 West Villa Maria Road at Welborn and Villa Maria. I think I'm in One.
You are in Wood.
Okay, Mr. Nettles.
Please state your name.
I'm your girl. Okay. Well, I've got two things I want to talk-
Ms. Wood, just please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you did. Wonderful.
Marie Wood.
Thank you.
Yeah. Don't forget it. I've got two things I'd like to talk to you about. Now, Mr. Cassell, I'm sure you're a wonderful person and a great leader. In fact, I know you are because of last week's decision on No East Loop. But you're not our elected official. And as a citizen and a voter, I have a right, and so does all these other people. We have a right, and we deserve to know what's happening with our beloved Judge Peters. We need a status update on his health and his political status. And we need to know about this office that you're temporarily holding legally. The second thing is about these stupid machines. They are not, not legal. And President Trump has called to mind, the DOJ, the USAG is calling on us to get rid of these things. And I here today am throwing down the gauntlet for us citizens. And we are going to fight this thing, and we're going to get rid of them and go back to hand-counting our ballots and having fair elections. We are not having fair elections. I don't care how hard you try to argue about that. We do not have fair elections, not in this county and not in any county that uses voting machines or any kind of machine apparatus to tally the votes. And I would think, as astute men as you, and women, woman, as you are, the great court here could take the lead for the state of Texas and for the nation and be the vanguard of how to get rid of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Approval of the following appointments to the Brazos County Public Defender's Office Oversight Board with a term of August 16, 2025 to August 15, 2026. Michelle Esperanza, Fran Dwayne, and Jamie Martin.
Move approval A through C.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Five. Approval requested from Human Resources for acceptance of donated funds in the amount of $8,863.09 from the Texas Association of Counties to be used for employee safety equipment. Funds must be used through the TACRMP website.
Move.
Do I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Wanda made the motion. Now, second.
To Mr. Washington. Condala. Any discussion from Commissioners? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Six. Approval of the Order of Special Election for the November 4, 2025 Constitutional Amendment Election.
Move approval.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Seven. Permission to advertise an auction of surplus property.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. We have approved Agenda Item Number Seven. Agenda Item Number Eight. Approval of inter-local cooperation contract between Brazos County and the Texas Department of Public Safety for the expedited analysis of drugs.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Number Nine. Approval requested from Information Technology to pay out accumulated compensatory time to a part-time employee.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Judge, the only thing I'd like to know is what the total amount is that we're approving here.
Seventy-two hours?
Yep.
What's the dollar, what's the dollar figure?
Eric, would you like to come forward? Court calls Eric Caldwell. Good morning. Thank you, sir.
Eric Caldwell, Chief Information Officer for Brazos County. Commissioner, I don't have that, I don't have an answer for you. I knew it was 72 hours. His actual rate of pay, I didn't look that up. I don't know. I can find out and get back to you.
We're looking into it. We're researching. We'll get it.
That was Jennifer Salas, our HR Director. She'll look it up for you.
Well, in the future, it'd just be nice if we knew that upfront.
Yes, sir. No, I agree. I understand that, and it's a failing on my part. My mistake.
Thank you, Eric.
I want to pay for the work that they do.
Okay, we will continue with Agenda Item Number Nine. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Ten. Approval to write-off outstanding accounts receivable in the amount of $238,707 owed by Caprock Hospital to the local provider participation fund fiscal year 2025.
Sadly, I move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
Judges, I want to point out that this does not come out of the county's coffers. This is a pass-through.
Correct.
So there's no cost to us.
Thank you. We do have citizens' input on this agenda item. The court calls Cindy Wiley. Cindy, please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Cindy Wiley, Precinct One. So I was asking Bruce this question before the meeting. So I used to do bankruptcy back in the day. And if they are anticipating filing bankruptcy, I don't think we're technically a creditor. We're like an agent for the hospitals, from what I understand. But there's several of us that have this question, so I wanted to ask it in a public forum so that we could get a clarification, because that's, that's a lot of money to just cross your line through, even though it technically is not coming out of the copper. Still, we're involved in the process, so that's why I have a question. So that's my question. How are, how is the county going to handle this if they file a bankruptcy? And that's probably the thrust of the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. So Agenda Item Number Ten. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Approval of service fee for the offices of the sheriff and constables to be effective January 1, 2026.
So I want to move to table this item.
Second.
Second.
I had some questions, and Constable Lampo was out yesterday doing what we want him to do, protect us and keep us safe. But I just would like to have the opportunity to visit with him and the sheriff about how these fees were set this year, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Nettles. Any further discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I'd like to, to add to that, I'd like to know what the old fees were and how much more the new fees will be in each category.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Conover, Commissioner Watson?
No question.
Any further discussion? Agenda item number 11 has a motion to table and a second. All those in favor to table agenda item number 11, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 11 has been tabled. Agenda item number 12. Approval of Agreement 25-085 Post-Adjunction Secure Residential Treatment of Juveniles with Harris County.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 13. Approval of Agreement 25-147 Tax Statements with Very Verge LLC in the amount of $73,319.35. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Printing is expensive.
We do have a speaker. Court calls Cindy Wiley. Cindy, please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Cindy Wiley, Precinct One. In anticipation, not to be sarcastic that I won't get an answer, I did ask Katie on this question, why are we doing this, why are we not doing this in-house, since these are our documentation? They're going out to a third party. All of our documentation, all of our information as citizens is going out to a third party to do that. I do kind of wonder, though, why do we not have the ability to do so many of these tasks in-house where we control the data? She said that this was cost prohibitive, that it's more expensive for us to try to do this in-house with labor and equipment. But I think I would like for you guys to look at this as something that we can possibly keep in-house in the future. I know we make an initial investment for the equipment, but we also, it's my comfort that my data would be kept here. And that's my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. We have a motion and a second on agenda item number 13. Any further discussion in the court? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 14. Approval of Contract 25-148 Cell Phone Texting Archive Services with Smarch Incorporated.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Judge, I've got a, I've got a problem. Well, number one, it's a, it's a Canadian company. And I thought they didn't like us anymore, or we don't like them, one of those two, but that's really not the issue. The issue is that we go into these three-year contracts, and then at the end of the third year, we just add a year or add two years without going out to bid. And it, I just wonder, are we getting the best deal? Have, have, has technology changed during that three-year period that we just automatically add a year? So that's, that's my issue with it. We just automatically do that on so many of these contracts, and that's, I think that's to our detriment.
Thank you, Commissioner. We do have public participation. Court calls Kathy Vines. Kathy, please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Kathy Vines, Precinct Four. I had a question, but it wasn't actually in regard to the renewal of the contract in the, towards the effort of transparency. I didn't just wait to come to court today to ask this question. I called Charles, went and got an answer to my question, and what I understood him to say, because my question was, why is the original contract not in there? My understanding is that when we renew a contract, the original should be included on the agenda so that the public can see the original agreement. But from what I understand from Charles is that this is a, a new contract that's rewritten every year. It's not a renewal, because the contract terms change, and he agreed that the, you know, that these details would be listed in the agenda in the future, and so I just wanted to bring that to your attention for the accountability purposes. I like the original agreements attached.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Vines. Commissioners, we have a motion on agenda item number 14 and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 15. Permission to advertise RFP 25-151 Legal Representation of Juveniles. Commissioner Watson?
Well, initially, I was going to move to table it because I have some concern, you know, I'm always people-first, and so making sure that we are doing the best, we are providing the best representation or legal representation for juveniles, because, you know, of young people that shoot, that sometimes make unfortunate mistakes, I want us to have the best representation possible. And so my concern was that there are potentially three different resources that will have a part in representing the juveniles of Brazos County. Check, hate when I says Brazos.
I was gonna let it go. I was gonna let it go.
Brazos County. Anyway, so, so my initial concern was making sure that through these different potential entities that will have a part in representing these young people, that we're doing the best that we can in a way that is efficient, but first and foremost, that we provide the services that are needed for these young people. With that, having again talked to our general counsel, I feel fairly confident that putting this out for bid affords us the opportunity to explore different opportunities, and so therefore, I will choose to go forward and make the motion that we approve this, because we're doing the research to look for the possibilities and the opportunities for fair representation of our youth. And that is always my concern with anything that has to do with the citizens that we represent. I have a servant's heart, and I want to be sure that we, as the county, as a part of our mission, our role as commissioners, that we're providing that fair representation, good and fair representation. So I'll make the motion to approve this, this agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson. We have a second from Commissioner Condala. Any further discussion from the court? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 16. Approval of the following Evaluation Committee for RFP 25-151 Legal Representation of Juveniles.
Move for approval A through M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 16 is approved. Moving to agenda item number 17. Approval of Contract 25-152 Secured Long-Term and Short-Term Residential Services with Hayes County.
Move for approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. 17 is approved. Agenda item number 18. Permission to advertise RFP CIP 25-527 Road and Bridge Office Building Renovations. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I've got, I've got two questions. Number one, is this, is there an amount that's already budgeted in this next budget? Or are we just waiting for bids on this?
Ms. Payne is up and ready. I was looking at Charles, but we'll, we'll call, we'll call Nina and Charles, unless Nina does a good job. Ms. Payne, thank you.
Good morning. And currently, for the former ag renovation for this year, we have budgeted $300,000, but we had used some of the money for architect and design. And for the Road and Bridge renovation, it was 2.4, but we also used some of the, some of that money that was budgeted this year for, for design. I don't have the actuals.
And this has been on the books for several, pre-COVID, wasn't it?
This is going on, we'll be going three years. But I do not have the actually, what the actual has been. I could send that to you. If that's okay. You're welcome. And so that, what's happening is we're doing budget amendments, as you can see, moving it to the general fund balance to cover it for next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Judge, the only other thing I wanted to, wanted to say, I've been out there, and those are deplorable, a deplorable building, and I'm so glad that this is going to happen. But, you know, when I was in the, when I was in the car business, when people did a good job, they, they got rewarded, and I want to reward them with a new building. The only thing that I'd like to know is, it bothers me that they're not, the Road and Bridge is not accountable to us as far as giving us reports on what they do each and every month. We know they're out there. We know they have a lot of trucks, they have a lot of material. But all these flags flew up last week when we talked about redoing the, the parking lot at the Brazos Center, and they said, well, we can't do that for various reasons. So my, my question is, why can't we get monthly statements showing everything that Road and Bridge is doing to make our county a better county? And that's the end of my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? There being none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Agenda item number 18 is passed. Moving to agenda item number 19. Approval of the following Evaluation Committee for RFP CIP 25-527 Road and Bridge and Office Building Renovations.
So I would like to move to amend this item. It struck me that there are three voting members on there, and two of them are from Road and Bridge, so the customer is picking their vendor, which didn't seem quite fair. I'd like to add Wyatt Hahn, Tom Green, and Company Engineering, so at least it's a balance for people on there voting.
We have an amendment. Do we have a motion to amend?
I second that.
I move to amend.
We have a motion and a second for the amend, to amend agenda item number 19 in the evaluation committee. All those in, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 19 has been amended as followed.
I move to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve the amended motion? And we do. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? There being no more discussion, all those in favor of the amended agenda item number 19, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 20. Approval of Contract CIP 25-607 Records Archival Project Probate Records with Co-File Technologies Incorporated.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 21. Approval of Contract 26-008 for Copier Maintenance with Texas Document Solutions. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, those against, the same side. The ayes have it. Excuse me. Number, agenda item number 22. Approval of the Final Plaid of Hunter Crossing Estate Phase Two Lots 1 through 40, 52.0 acres, GH Coleman survey, a 10 Francis Henderson survey, a 20 City O'Brien ETG Brazos County, Texas site is located in Precinct Two. Request was previously tabled during Commissioners Court meeting held on 7/29/2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item 22 is passed. Agenda item number 23. Approval of the Treasurers Report for May 2025.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 24. Tax Refund Applications for the Following.
Move for approval A through D? Excuse me, A through, yeah, A through D.
A through D, correct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 25. Budget Amendments Fiscal Year 2425 Budget Amendments 40.01 to 40.02.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 26. Personnel Change of Status.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 27. Payment of Claims. Approval of Payment of Claims A and B.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. 27 is passed. Agenda item number 28. Convene and Executive Session pursuant to the following. Texas Governor Code 55107 Consult with Attorney about pending contemplated litigation and/or settlement offer. Yes.
Judge, do you want, you want to pass those and finish the remainder of the agenda and come back to the executive session?
We can do that. So move to, agenda item 30. Please excuse me.
As Fred and I recall, members back up.
We'll move to agenda item number 30. Acknowledgement of the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget to Actuals by Fund as of July 30th, 2025. Acknowledgement of the Fiscal 2024-25 Contingency Budget to Actuals by Funds as of July 30th, Agenda item 31. Juvenile Directors Report on Detention Population. Linda, thank you for being here today.
Good morning again. We have 23 juveniles in detention. We have 18 males, five females, and 25 on electronic monitors.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 32. Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Sheriff Dickey, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, 745 today, 642 men, 103 women, 33 on electronic monitoring.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, happy bela, and thank you for good work yesterday. Thank you for your and your team. Moving back to agenda item number 28, convene in executive session pursuant to the following. Texas Governor Code, consult attorney about pending.
You typically do announcements of interest.
I apologize, we will do announcements of interest in possible future agenda topic items, agenda number 33. Are there any announcements of interest in item, possible future agenda topics?
Just wanted to, go ahead.
Chair, Commissioner Nettles.
Precinct one, precinct two.
So I wanted to.
We do have a town hall this Saturday for Precinct One. Myself, Jeff Reeves, and Kenny Elliott will be there, we also have the veteran service officer who will be there, and Judge Roy Brantley. So please come out, learn what we're doing, ask questions, and help us understand what your issues are. Second, there is a MPO meeting here tomorrow morning at 9:30. I encourage you to come and bring your issues to them. I'm one of five people on that, so you need to also engage the other folks.
Thank you, Commissioner Nettles. Commissioner Condler.
I just wanted to thank Karen and everyone for their words in remembering Ruth McLeod and her contributions to the county, employee number two, the unflappable. Also, Joel Heine was passed early, it's very sad when anyone passes, especially someone young, unexpected like that, so I'm really glad that his name will be part of the county's buildings and memory and an example for people, you know, the godly and fun and wonderful personality, as you heard so many people describe him. I was with Marcia at the funeral, at the memorial for him, and we were in line, and poor Marcia had to stand with me for an hour, listening to me for an hour, talking. But, but it was wonderful, we were there pretty early, and it was an hour delay, and listening to people talk about him. I wish everyone could have known him more, including myself, but from the example he sets, I'm really glad that we'll be remembering him here at Brazos, Brazos County. Happy birthday, Trevor.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, sir. I just want to give a follow-up on Steve Aldrich. He is home, he's doing well, his hair's growing back, and he was in row class last Saturday. So doctors have given him permission to do whatever he needs to do, he's in great shape, and he looks fantastic, so thank you for all your prayers during all that time that he was in the hospital and then in recovery.
Commissioner Watson?
No, I don't have anything.
Good, okay. With that being said, I will consult our legal counsel, and we'll move to agenda item 28, to convene in the executive session pursuant to the following, A through C. Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
And a second.
And Judge, on item B, I just want to make a note that I had submitted my written determination that negotiating in open forum would be detrimental to the best interests of the county. That's been filed with staff, and I need you to, if unanimous, vote to go into executive session on that contract in order to comply with the statute.
So do we need to make a motion on agenda item 28B by itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve agenda item number 28B?
So moved.
We have a motion, Commissioner Condler, and a second from Commissioner Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, it is unanimous. It is now 10:59, and the Brazos County Commissioners' Court will proceed to executive session.
One, two, three, four. It is eleven forty AM and the Brazos County Commissioners Court has left executive session and is back in court. Any further discussion commissioners? There be none. We have a motion to adjourn.
Can we state that there's no action to be taken?
There's no action to be taken on the executive session. Therefore it is intended the court to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. And a second. Thank you. We adjourn.